Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to approve our agenda, please?
Sure.
Commissioner Adel Dukra, seconded by Commissioner Matson. Are there any changes to the agenda? Commissioner Matson?
Yeah, I would just want to, I think it makes more sense if I put my budget presentation in front of public comment.
Okay.
If you could switch three and four.
Sure. Any other objections? Commissioner Panachfeld?
Oh yeah, no, not objection, but could I just make an announcement?
Sure.
So, as you might know, we're really not allowed to engage in any sort of discussion with you guys tonight, and Keith calls very vocal about that, but just so you know, there's a lot of MGA meetings that are happening right now around the city where we can engage with you, and so there happens to be the Board Two, Three MGA which will be on Thursday night, which is entirely dedicated to school budget issues and school regulations, and there'll be a Partnership for Change update, and Commissioner Matson will be there to do his budget presentation, and then the Board Two, Three Commissioners will be there to also discuss the budget. So, just so you know, if you wanted to sort of do a Q and A, that's the place to do it.
And Commissioner, Mr. Panachfeld, Board One, who will be meeting Wednesday night, is doing the same thing, so we'll be right out there talking. Okay, do you have a motion to, we have a motion to adopt an agenda which switches three and four? Any other changes? All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner Matson will now present the proposal from the Finance Committee regarding the fiscal year 2014 budget, their recommendation and rationale for that recommendation.
I'm gonna try to speak this direction as much as possible, they've heard this a few times, and although some of you may have already heard this, oh, do you want me to be using this camera?
Is this on?
Good. So, before I begin the budget discussion, I would like to do something that I did the last time I did the presentation, which is thank a couple of people, at least in the Finance Department, who put in a lot of work to help us put together the numbers, in particular, David Larkome and Karen Roseclose. David's here this evening, Karen is not, but they've spent a lot of time working on this, as well as Meket Jennings, who helped put together the presentation, and Mary Ann Kelman, who also was invaluable during the whole budget process, making sure that we're all getting our information back and forth. So this is the second of our two public hearings, we'll also be taking public comment tomorrow night before the Board meeting, at which we may well end up putting the budget, voting on the budget that we will put forward to the general public in March, although it does happen before the weekend, I think we can go up to about January 15th if necessary. We also will make a presentation tonight, a few of us will need to go down to City Council and present as well, but these are just some other opportunities, as well as the MGA meetings to have debate about the budget. As I get, as we begin talking here about fiscal 2013, thank you. But one thing I wanted to bring up is something that I don't think a lot of times is heard by the general public, which is a discussion of the Board goals, and in large part because the Board goals is what the administration takes into account when they bring back to us budget recommendations. And we try to think a lot in terms of the Board goals as we're deciding, you know, what kind of, what kind of funding choices should we make during the year, and I think one of the things that we heard in particular at the last open session in December were a few comments from the general public discussing how maybe some of the decisions we're looking at may or may not fit in with the Board goals. One of the goals that we have put forward, and it's very similar to things we have every year, that this year is described as defining what it means to be educated in the Burlington School District. I think one of the places that this work is happening very clearly right now is in the Partnership for Change between Winuski and Burlington, so a certain amount of the funding for what I would say that goal is not actually on the local budget, as Partnership for Change is currently funded by its outside grant sources from Valley Mae. There are three items up there that basically involve strategic plans. There is the Strategic Plan for Equity and Inclusion, there is this budget goal over three to five years, and the Five-Year Capital Plan. All three of these plans are long-term plans, and I think that this budget process, for example, I'm gonna discuss some of the historical reasons for what are, what has driven our budgets over the past several years, and it's the kind of thinking we're looking at over the next three to five years going forward, is to say, what are the drivers? What is, where are the cost pressures coming from? Where are the numbers pressures coming from on students as well, as we're looking forward in our budgeting process? Additionally, we're looking to put in, you know, we have this goal now that we're talking about keeping our spending increases as adjusted for our change in population within a certain range of inflation. And I think in a perfect world, we would be looking at this as saying, in a three to five-year time period, we want our, the cost structure of the Burlington School District to reflect inflation, but when I get into a few of the pricing pressures, you'll see why, I think right now in the world of education, I'm not sure that the overall measure of inflation is the appropriate measure to be looking at long-term. The third, well, additionally, I think the Strategic Plan for Equity and Inclusion, it'll be clear as we go through the budget, how this plays out in the recommendations that have come forward, and then the final, the Five-Year Capital Plan is something we're looking very carefully at, as many of you remember, I came onto the Board almost four years ago, and at that, on that election, we put forward two bond issues. The one bond issue is just finishing up now with the work that's being done at Flynn, but now there's another time to look at, say, what are the capital needs that we have going forward. The three other pieces that are there, the Data and Form Decisions, Monitoring and Supporting the One-to-One Technology Initiative, and Improving Our Capacity to Tell the Story. Of those three, I think that it's very clear about the Technology Initiative, where that shows up, but the other two are really tactical and operational behavior that the Board is trying to adopt, and probably are less involved in the budget-making process, but I did want, the ability to tell the story does come out. I mean, I think one of the challenges that we see as a Board is really engaging the community and telling the community what goes on in our schools, and all the great things that are happening, you know, from literally from pre-K through 12, and even sometimes post-12. And oftentimes, the only story that we get to tell occurs now, which has to do with expenses. The, it becomes a challenge, but I think it's one of the reasons I wanted to put up Board Goals, so that you could get a bit of a picture into what the Board thinking is like, and what the Board is looking at over the year. The drivers of education costs in Burlington, when I show you what's been happening historically, I think it, you know, becomes very clear that we have been spending at a level, and our increases have been higher than the general rate of inflation. But within Burlington, I'm gonna say that there are probably six major drivers of cost increases within the, within the school district. First and foremost is the increase in students, I will quantify these in the next slide, I think it is. That will be pretty obvious to see, and we are by both students in the seat and what we call, and by the adjusted numbers, which account for the fact that it's more expensive for students, certain students to be in our schools, both those numbers have been up in the four years that I've been on the Board, close to a percent a year. There's been a significant increase in special education costs over the past, it's been for a pretty significant amount of time, but in the four years I've been on the Board, it's been more than a percent a year, not in special education costs, but literally on the, on the overall effect on the budget. And this is happening for a number of reasons, but I think that there's some things that have been happening in our society that I'm not gonna look for explanations, but I do wanna point out, they are happening. The autism spectrum is something that is a very, you know, we all know, we've all heard the stories, and to these days, literally, one in 100 or one in 115 children, or something like that, are ending up being diagnosed on the autism spectrum. And one of the responsibilities of the school district is to educate all of our children, and when we provide educational opportunities for all children, the fact is, it's a very, it's a very cost-intensive issue in our society right now, and it is falling on the public schools to take, to play a lead role here. And the second part that we're seeing is a significant increase in the diagnosing of emotional and behavior problems, and, you know, whether or not it's being diagnosed, or whether or not we're having more problems, I don't really wanna point out, but I don't wanna speculate on it, but the truth is, we're diagnosing them earlier, which is good, but it also does have an increased cost. A third driver that we've had since I've been on the Board, again, is this capital spending, and we'll see what that effect has been. The fourth I saw is an additional curriculum area. In the past 10 to 15 years, we have literally added an entirely new curriculum area into the Burlington School District, and that is in English language learning. We now have a population of 15 to 20, 15 to 20 percent of our kids are coming into our school, not speaking English as a first language, and to provide education for all of our children, it's been important for us to build up this particular curriculum area. And finally, there is the competitive environment for all of our graduates. The very simple way for me to describe this is, I know when I graduated from high school, most competitive schools in this country were probably accepting about 15 percent of the applicants who put in an application to, you know, Ivy League schools, Middlebury, the high-end schools across this country. And these days, when I have a son who's applying for schools this year, you know, these numbers are in the 5 to 8 percent range. What that means is, we need to be providing the opportunities for our kids to excel in ways that will make them competitive, as they had, whether it's into colleges, and this is no different for, you know, I think kids going into non-college programs, the competition and where kids, where kids are expected to be as they graduate from high school, has changed significantly, the expectation for our kids, and we need to make sure that we're able to keep up with that as well. So, the upshot in this sort of growth in expenses, since I've come on the Board, the 5.71 percent number that's up in the right-hand, upper right-hand corner, represents the compounded rate of growth in our school spending budgets, if the budget that we put forward tonight is accepted. And a breakdown of that 5.71 percent begins with inflation. We've had approximately 1.66 percent inflation during that period of time. This is my measure, this is based on, I'm gonna call conservative measures, I've seen other measures that put that closer to 2.5 percent, but I use what I consider to be a modestly conservative number of 1.66 percent. The increase in students have added about 0.83 percent to our spending over the past four years, that's per year. Special education costs, as I mentioned, over 1 percent on our budget, and you just, you know, it's not 1 percent on, you know, year-to-year on special education spending, that number is more, you know, it's multiples of that, because it's only a fraction of the budget. Capital spending, with the additional debt service that we've taken out over the past four years, has added about a half a percent per year, and that's an amount that will, is basically flattening out if we do nothing else, as we move past fiscal 2014, which this budget is for. And then, the 1.5 percent up at the top of core spending, built into a number like that, are making sure that our programs are competitive, and I kinda wanna give one more example, which is healthcare costs. You know, all of us, I think, have probably received, and are starting to pay new, our new premiums for healthcare, and the healthcare premiums for our largest bargaining unit, the teachers, are up 14 percent this year, which when you put that into our budget, adds more than a percent to our budget, just for contracted healthcare increases. And don't forget, with our teachers paying between 10 and 15 percent of their own, you know, of their own premiums, as well as deductibles, you know, this is a cost that they're sharing with us as well. Quickly, I just wanna, I put this slide up last year, I wanna re-talk about this slide, which has to do with our enrollment. What I've done is I've taken our current graduating classes and made them 100 percent students, it's approximately 250 students. And the key aspects here is, we look out to the right, as we look out to the right here, which is our basically K through four right now, you can see that our K through four classes are 20-plus percent larger than our graduating class, and a solid, pretty much 10 percent higher than our current high school. You know, basically 10 percent, if you take each particular year, higher than our high school numbers. And one thing that we should also note is that in general, we get a big bump between eighth grade and ninth grade for high school, as kids come out of private primary schools and go into our high school. So, what we're seeing with this bulge over in our lowest five grades right now, is that our population will be increasing in our school district, kind of without doubt, at about a percent a year for the next three to four years, you know, basically, as this group comes through as well, it'll approximately be about a percent a year for the next several years, so this is something that's still going to be there. I just wanted to point this out, this is in stark contrast to what's happening across the state, as the numbers across the state are showing down more than 10 percent versus this year's senior class. Thought I had one more slide prior, no? Okay. So, where does that leave us? The expense budget that was passed in fiscal 2013 was for 59.6 million. If we just roll the school district forward from fiscal 13 to fiscal 14, this is what we would see. In just regular education spending, which includes the healthcare costs, we've got, nah, I was not supposed to do that, which was not, which would not include the healthcare costs, which does include the healthcare costs, I'm sorry, would be, is approximately $2 million. Right now, we're projecting nearly $1 million in special education cost spending, there's a bit of grant reduction that we're looking at this year, although we think we have avoided a greater number there with what's happened with the fiscal cliff settlement that was reached at the end of last year. We have put into this budget the one, funding the additional one-to-one technology program that we started last year, debt service hasn't add, and there's another small amount. Basically, we're looking at an amount of almost $4 million increase over a $59 million budget last year, if we were simply to nothing year-to-year. The administration also came back to us with a few recommendations, things that we need, and that we have put into this budget. First is the elementary teacher, which I showed you the bulge in K through four, and that's gonna require next year, another teacher in the K to five grades. Additionally, with our ELL population where it is, and building the curriculum, as well as, you know, the goal of diversity and equity, we have felt, and we are understaffed, I think overall in ELL, to add two positions. Again, with professional development on diversity and equity issues, we've put in $80,000 as, as it reflects part of our Board goals, but it's also a result of some extremely effective professional development we had this past year, and basically, we renewed and put in some, basically, we renewed the funding that we did last year, given the great success that we had, and especially, we got extremely strong feedback from a number of teachers asking for more of this training, in fact, asking for training that others had had, that they hadn't been able to have. And additionally, there's a point for add for social studies curriculum development at the high school, and once again, this is driven by the, you know, we see the opportunity to really provide some new and innovative curriculum, especially as it relates to different forms of, of, in the world of diversity and equity, as providing a more culturally aware curriculum at the high school.
Al, just wanna...
Elementary.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for the curriculum. From, this is actually not at the high school level, this is in the lower grades, the curriculum, Social Studies Curriculum Development Specialist. That result was that our budget was at the 63.6 million, at which point in time, we had given to the administration the charge that we wanted to see budgets that had 0 percent spending increase, 2 percent spending increase, and a 4 percent spending increase, and what would they look like? And I think it's fair to say that in effect, this is basically the baseline number that the administration came back to us from, to get back to the 0, 2, and 4 percent. And if you do basically the math, which is $4 million over approximately $60 million, looking, that number right there is approximately 7 percent in a spending increase. The administration brought to back to us, like I said, three different levels of funding cuts, and over meetings in November and December, at the Finance Committee meeting and at the full Board meeting, there were a larger array of areas where we looked to make some savings, that were discussed. What we're putting forward right now, and this is a recommendation that is going to the full Board tomorrow night, the Board then needs to take final action on, and so there is still time to be making changes. The Finance Committee came back with a, to the Board, of bringing our budget down to approximately a 4.5 percent spending increase through a number of items. And many of you are here because of, many of you have seen this, have talked about a few of these things, and I know that some of you are here to talk about particular issues, but I wanna go through just a number of the things that we have put on the Board as taking back some funding, and as well, I wanna briefly touch upon a few things that we've talked about that we have not addressed. Obviously, when we look at budgets, the first thing we'd like to do is say, we don't wanna touch the students, which almost becomes impossible when really, most of our funding does touch the students in some fashion. But that being said, we began by looking at the administrative staff positions, and we've asked that the administration cut to director-level positions. As I go through the rest of the programs, I'm going to be fairly quick, I think that there's been a certain amount of deeper discussion in the community about some of these, but we looked at taking back one K through six Spanish teacher position several years ago, we fully funded, I think it's about four positions in K through six, and this is just an area where, as we looked at it, we didn't know that we could keep supporting this program, given a lot of the other trade-offs we were looking at. There are two Burlington High School teachers that we asked for reductions in the staffing at the high school, although there were no specifics attached to those by the Board. I know that there are, probably are discussions of what they would do if that ends up being as part of the budget. On the paraeducator front, I would like, like to be, I mean, paraeducators provide, I would say, as many different services as you can imagine within our school district. They do everything from help staff, libraries, to work individually with students on IEPs, individual education plans, and across the Board. We have a significant paraeducator staff at this point, we do have paraeducators who we brought on last year, who are working with our very large classes in the elementary school, but we've asked for the district to work on a reduction in the staffing of the paraeducator world, and I mean, I think that there's ideas of where the focus could be, but once again, it was left unspecified. The two middle school special teachers, I think many of you have, there's been a fair amount of discussion about this, which was in the Healthy Living Room, it would actually remove the Healthy Living Program from our middle school. The social worker, there, this one in fact actually is going the other direction from most of our grants, that social worker actually would shift to grant funding, so it's not a position that's being lost, but being moved off the local budget. There was a part-time wellness staff, staffing position at Sustainability Academy, that was added recently, and I think that the idea of just how many students are being served, the district, we felt as if it couldn't be maintained. And the outreach coordinator positions, which are two half-time positions at the middle schools, the outreach program is something that has been, that originally came into the district via a grant, and over the years, has moved onto the local budget, and it's been one that I know that many Boards have struggled with finding whether or not we can keep funding this. Family-school partnership funding touches, I guess, many of our, you know, community, I mean, touches into our families, as opposed to really the community outreach, which reaches, brings our kids into the Burlington community to do on hands-on learning. The family-school partnerships are really about bringing kids' families into the schools. Once again, this is a program that's not a classroom program, but that, you know, we're just trying to struggle to find ways to keep funding for. And the last two items are basically joint, 15 percent cut in all co-curriculars across the district, and that reflects athletics, as well as non-athletics, the discussion there being, you know, if we are going to be touching classroom staff, if we're gonna be touching such things as outreach and family-school partnerships, everything needs to be looked at, and that was brought down, to get us to a point where our final expense budget is about 4.5 percent at this point, over last year's approved budget. A few quick comments, I mentioned the 4.5 percent spending increase. The tax increase is likely to be larger, when I originally did this report in December, there were a good number of unknowns, and there still are. You know, there's talk that the, the base level at the state is gonna be 5 cents higher, that will add to the increase, that has nothing to do with our spending changes. There are some additional revenue reductions that may be coming down the line related to revenue we receive from the city, as well as, you know, unfortunately, in fiscal 11, we had a budget surplus that we were accounting for, and this year, we will need to be accounting for a budget deficit, so I really can't speak to the tax increase, it will be something that will be spoken to a lot, once we get all the final numbers, which unfortunately don't end up really coming in until later in January, not February, to really get further numbers on that. If you take a quick look at what kind of staff reductions we're looking at, because in the school district, anytime we're looking at cutting any kind of funding, it usually comes down to people. And if you look up there, this is not something that is all pleasant, but I do need to put it out in, and I think it's important to the Board to put it out, in numbers, which is approximately, you know, over, over 20 full-time positions are what we're looking to take out of the schools right now. In effect, to try to keep, as we have, our budgets within a long-term goal that is tied to inflation, and I think the goal, the views on inflation that we've had have been within 1.5 to 2 percent, which 4.5 percent is probably stretching the edge of it, but it fits in with that long-term goal. That's the kind of stuff that's required now, given the existing pressures on education Final additional comments, these were some other, these are other reductions that we were considering, if we were to go all the way down to 0 and 2 percent, or even fully to 4 percent. Fully reducing elementary Spanish, which would be another three positions. Certainly co-curriculars, not funding the one-to-one technology, that number was in the budget, we put it up there directly, $350,000. Not funding or cutting back on the diversity and equity office, there were a couple numbers on the screen there, but there were also positions that would have to be looked at if we went further, but we also thought that didn't fit with Board Goals. And then, as we get down into these, to the lower four pieces, I mean, this is, you know, what it would take really to get down to a 0 percent increase at this point, we would be looking at removing after-school summer programs, but I think the big one before anything really could have, would be full-day kindergarten. You know, simply full-day kindergarten is one area that's not mandated, it's something that we've seen the community find extremely important, we thought there was no way to go there, but if we were to truly have the 0 percent budget increase, expense increase, there's no way that we can continue to fund full-day kindergarten. And in closing, I guess I'd just say, this is our last public hearing, but there will be public comment tomorrow night again at the School Board meeting, and we may end up having one more meeting after that, I am not sure yet, my contact information is up there. And again, I would say that this document, if you wanna look at it some more, is connected both to tonight's agenda through the BSBBT website, and it's also on tomorrow night's agenda, so if you wanna take a further look at that, that's where you can find it. Thank you very much, Al.
Now we're going to go to public comment. We would like to ask you, try to keep your presentation to three minutes, because we obviously have a lot of people who like to speak to us. And Alan and the superintendent and I need to be at City Council around nine o'clock due to our required presentation to them. So let's get started and hear everybody that we can. Start off with Nancy Radley, followed by Susan Mann. Please come up and take the microphone so you can be heard on the television. We, as Commissioner Conchell has already indicated, we are not allowed to respond to you, but we really like to hear what you have to say. And if you have hard copies of your presentation, we appreciate seeing you able to read it another time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for hearing me. I, my position is not one of those currently on the list, Barb, but this comes up every year. So I want to speak to, I'm one of five teachers in Burlington School District that provides Tier Two intervention to children. The best of my knowledge, we're the last of the Tier Two interventionists at the elementary school level. We teach reading recovery. As you work your way through this budget cycle, I want to let you know what it is we do and why it's so important. I'll tell you prior upfront, if you want to effectively provide a solid equitable education for all children of Burlington, then you should not only support, but expand early intervention programs, including reading recovery, and oh, by the way, full-day kindergarten should be in there too. First, we're hiring for young teachers. We participate in monthly ongoing professional development with our reading recovery colleagues around the county. These ongoing conversations are very unique and are critical towards supporting our workers, learners, and continuously improving our own skills. That doesn't go towards public speaking. We work with the academically neediest children in the first grade. We take these lowest achieving children, and we accelerate their learning curve through intense one-on-one customized instruction. This is a short-term intervention for these very vulnerable children before they're considered for special education. We work with them in both reading and writing, moving them towards achieving the same level of skills as their grade-level peers. As research will support, early intervention is key. It's so much more effective to intervene early to address a child's learning needs than it is to wait until they've experienced failure. That unfortunately is the model for special education based on how the law is written. Special education is a Tier Three intervention, and one of the gates to qualify for special education is adverse effect. Adverse effect means having failed. It's much more difficult to get a child back on track as a learner after they've experienced repeated failure. You must reteach them, replacing habituated, ineffective behaviors and strategies, as well as helping overcome the emotional toll that repeated failure has on their perception of themselves as learners. I recognize we have to operate within a budget. There's limited funds. Reading recovery and other early interventions are financially more cost-effective if you look at it over the longer term. With early intervention, even if you need to provide a child with extra instructional support for two or three years, it's less than the cost of special education over many years. As to the conversation about reading recovery teachers working with one-on-one versus changing the model and working as literacy interventionists with large groups. Phil Darrow, who was one of the writers of the mathematics section of Common Core, said the problem with mathematics instruction in the United States is we go a mile wide and an inch deep. And if you want to replace reading recovery with general literacy interventionist, then you're going to achieve the same results. So the question is, do you want quantity or do you want quality in the depth of the intervention? So I'm encouraging you, please continue supporting reading recovery in Burlington, as well as other early intervention services, including full-day kindergarten.
Thank you.
And I do have some packets of information I wanted to share with you.
Okay, thank you very much. Susan Mann. And after Susan, we'll be in a group that would like to speak, I think I was told together, daughter in kindergarten, parents, I'm not sure. Monica.
Thank you. One of my colleague Nancy, I'm a reading recovery teacher, and I'm here with my principal, Brian Williams, from the Sustainability Academy. I was one of the first reading recovery teachers trained in the district in nineteen ninety-five. And I'm here tonight because something I strongly believe in is in jeopardy of being dropped or discontinued in this district, and that's why I'm here tonight. I can tell you that there are children in this world who are having significant challenges learning to read. Imagine what your life would be like if you couldn't read. As a first-grade teacher thirty-six years ago, thirty-six years ago, first-grade teacher, I taught reading, and I did the best I could teaching kids to read. Some of them learned easily to read, and others struggled. And when they struggled, I let special ed pick them up. That was wrong then, and it's wrong now. Early intervention is the key. And in nineteen ninety-five, something curiously happened. I began to have more success with the most struggling students that I ever worked with. The philosophy of reading recovery is built on the student's strengths. We're not in the business of the blame or excuse game, or the parents didn't read to their kids, or they were in a refugee camp, and that's why they're having trouble reading. Reading recovery is built on their strengths, that every child has a chance to read, and reading recovery teachers fully believe that. We build an individual program for the students who have the lowest literacy scores and give them the tools to be successful readers. The reading recovery teachers have been told that we need to work with more children in groups, which is what we do already. We are all trained in the Level Literacy Training Program, and we do work with children with great success. However, a student who enters first grade with the lowest literacy scores will have a much better chance of succeeding if a highly trained reading recovery teacher is there to tailor a program based on their strengths. The district has been very generous, thank you very much, for supporting reading recovery since nineteen ninety-five. This allows reading recovery teachers to be part of the consortium and receive continued training every six weeks. So since nineteen ninety-five, I've had training every six weeks. I can't tell you what a gift that has been. That's probably the best training that you could offer a teacher. We have access to colleague visits to problem-solve particular challenge, challenges, and parents are, have access to the best quality reading materials that are sent home that they can read with their kids. Nancy, my colleague who just spoke before me, is so right about the cost-effectiveness of reading recovery. Many of the students I've worked with have behavior problems or low self-esteem, but giving them the tools to read early on helps prevent some of those problems. And helps prevent some of them from having to go into special education, or perhaps even require a paraeducator to help with their behavior. In order for the reading recovery intervention to continue, the district will need to continue to pay the fee to the consortium every year as they have been. As a member of the district every council, I believe that we are all committed to providing an equitable education for every student in this district. Please continue to support reading recovery.
Thank you, Susan. Kindergarten team, followed by Kara Satel.
Hi, everyone. So I am Suzanne Byssar. I teach kindergarten at Edmonds. This is my nineteenth rotation there.
And I'm Barb Ganger. I teach at the Integrated Arts of Academy at Wheeler.
I'm Althea Hodgson. I teach at Flynn Elementary.
Kara Flynn, Edmonds Elementary.
Danielle Bussett, Edmonds Elementary.
Christine Pedro, CP Smith.
And we, first of all, just want to thank you and applaud you for supporting the paraeducator positions in our kindergartens this year. And just, we're here really just to delight and let you know that it's made a world of difference. And I know we saw earlier how interested everyone is in data, and I wish I had brought the data tonight about the PBIS data that shows the amount of office discipline referrals from even just last year or the year before compared to this year. And it's something that I think all of you would have access to by just talking with principals, but it's, it shows in the data the effectiveness. So we thought that we would do a kind of data letterman, top ten reasons why your money was well-spent this year. So number one, that our kindergarten students and teachers have a safe, productive learning environment. Then number two, that you're, the students of Burlington and the teachers have more instructional time with each other, and the ratio of teacher to student is obviously lower. That number three, it provides additional support for the rising challenging behaviors, that those behaviors, instead of going to a planning room or off to a principal, there's support in the classroom to manage small problems before they get huge, and keep them small. Number four, that our ELL students and specialized students, the students who need the most time and caring and support are getting that, if not from the classroom teacher, from a assistant in the classroom. Number five, that it's provided stronger communication with families. There's always a parent who needs to tell you something first thing in the morning, right as you're ready to start the day or welcoming the children. So there are many adults now to, they can go to. Number six, the curriculum can truly be differentiated with a trained teacher or a trained volunteer or a trained paraeducator in the room to support and listen to the students as they're learning. Number seven, the most important one for Barb, is that some of our students are still in diapers. And there is, teaching can actually continue, lessons can continue, and there can be someone who helps with toileting students who need to learn how to wipe, or change their snow clothes, or, you know, fix themselves after they've had an accident.
Zipper, tie.
Yeah. So all of those self-help skills that seem so obvious, oh, well, the teacher will do it? Well, not if you're teaching an academic lesson on writing. Number eight, the kindergarten is a year where there are so many consumables and so many things to prep, and books, students are now learning to read, so there are books to prepare for them. And there's another person who's able to help them get the learning tools that are just right for them. Number nine, more support is allowed, again, PBIS data will show it, lower office discipline referrals, which we saw on the slide earlier. We've seen a lot of increase in the amount of students who have to go see the principal or the planning room. Number ten, teachers are calmer and less stressed, and so are the students. If they need a tiny bit more time to work on something, they have got it. And it made us really feel like we had to shout out loud that.
We love our jobs!
So thank you for your time. I saw you went over.
Thank you very much. Kara Satel, followed by Nick Mulender, and then Ginger Farino. We're taking minutes. Could you just make sure you give us our names?
What's happening?
Make sure that we have your names.
Okay.
Trying to capture.
LaShawde Morsals, Hunnitt Middle School.
Tanya Kovak, Hunnitt Middle School.
Pecky Weaver, Hunnitt Middle School.
I'm Kara Satel, and I'm a language arts teacher at Hunnitt Middle School. And I'm speaking today with my colleagues regarding the cuts that are being made to the middle school curriculum, particularly the Healthy Living program. I understand the demands that are upon you this budget season in order to keep within a reasonable budget increase, especially with the drivers that increase expensive. However, I'm concerned about the idea of cutting Healthy Living, as are all of us. At home, what you may hear about Healthy Living is the sewing of aprons and the baking of cookies, because these activities are fun for kids, and what many of us, including myself, remember from our days of home ec. What you may not hear about is how Healthy Living has evolved over the years, now including education of HIV and AIDS, drugs, drinking, diversity, bullying, internet safety, eating disorders, making career choices, and how to balance a checkbook. Those are only a few of the topics that are discussed during the curriculum. Many of our students do not get this education at home, and it needs to happen before students enter high school, where they may be exposed to the dangers of drugs and drinking. By the time high school students take the required high school health class, at some point during high school, the students may already be unreachable and involved in unhealthy behaviors. Likewise, research shows that the earlier students are exposed to careers, the more likely they are to set goals and want to graduate high school to achieve these goals. The initial step towards setting these goals happens in middle school Healthy Living. Finally, it seems unthinkable to cut a valuable nutrition program where kids learn about healthy cooking and eating at a time when our nation's obesity rate is at its highest. Without Healthy Living, students will not receive this valuable education, and there is simply no room in the other contents for this curriculum to be absorbed. The Healthy Living curriculum needs to stand alone and remain its own program. Please think about the learning that our students need in order to make good choices in their lives, choices that start happening at the middle school level. We ask you to please reconsider the idea of cutting this valuable program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kara. Nick Mulender, followed by Ginger Farino, followed by Jennifer Sutton.
Good evening. I feel a little naked without a group of people behind me, but I'm here representing the BHS administration and want to thank all the commissioners for their hard work. Budget season is never easy. It's often said that you see the priorities of any organization in the budget, and it's just so, it makes me very proud to see the things that are up there that you didn't consider reducing. And I know it's very difficult to see that reductions list, and I know that that does not mean that these aren't priorities for you. But to see a school district that's embraced so many priorities is quite amazing. And as a high school representative, I could certainly spend a lot of time tonight talking to you about things on the reduction list. But I want to focus in on the family school partnership as the key one, because I want to give you some highlights of what's been a very successful couple of years for us. Beyond the fact that we have an award-winning family school partnership program, we've been featured at conferences. We had a very successful one-on-one initiative introduction, a rollout that invited our parents to come in to require meetings that our family school partnership coordinator helped set up, not just for our native-speaking families, but for all of our non-native speaking families. We had a very successful parent-teacher conference, highest numbers ever this year, thanks in part to our family school coordinator. We've had a lot of our day-to-day things. I could probably ask you, if you are a parent of a high school student, to raise your hand if you've gotten a call or email from Nancy Knox. You'll probably see that hand go up. So the question really is, these things are going to keep happening, and I think that's what we've become so accustomed to, is we are, we'll reduce something and expect it's still going to be there. So the question is, who will do these things? Whether it's myself, my other assistant principal, Beth Gezi, my other part-time assistant principal, Herb Perez, or our principal, Amy Mellencamp. The question really is, what don't you want us doing in order to do these things that have been so successful this year? So I wanted to be framed in that capacity to think about, who's going to manage that database? I can give you a great example of what happened Sunday night. We're taking on Thursday, January tenth, our entire freshman class down to not just the Echo exhibit, but a whole range of activities happening throughout the day at three different sites. And it's a wonderful opportunity. It's the kind of experience that the Burlington School District wants our students to have. Nancy emailed her database Sunday night and got eleven responses immediately for parent volunteers to help coordinate the movement of three hundred people between Main Street Landing, the cafe, the Bike Cafe, and the Echo exhibit. That's amazing. But it's something I couldn't have done that quickly. So I want you to think in terms of these great opportunities, and what is it that you would expect to have our administrators not doing in order to keep these great things going? So thank you for your time, and best of luck. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. Ginger, followed by Jennifer Sutton, followed by Jeanne Clark.
Hi, I'm Ginger Farino, and I apologize because my speech is going to be quite identical to the other one in support for Healthy Living. I've been working for the district, this is my fourteenth year, and Family Consumer Sciences, or Healthy Living is what we call it, offers the opportunity for every student to succeed. With the district's current focus on diversity and equity, Healthy Living, along with other exploratory classes such as music, art, and design, and design and technology, all students on the same plane. Every student has the same opportunity to succeed. I can't speak for Deb, my colleague, or Jill, who's teaching at Edmonds Asher, but if I find that a student is doing their personal best, then they're learning something and developing helpful life skills, and therefore they are successful. No matter what the student's abilities, background, opportunities, or the lack of are, the chances of success are the same across the board. Healthy Living classes do not have standardized tests attached to them. Is this the reason that we think that they are worthy of being cut? Do we value them less than core classes? I don't think so. I'm willing to bet that many people aren't even aware of exactly what is taught in Healthy Living, although you now are, because we were told. But it is no longer the home economics of the nineteen sixties. In addition to learning how to cook and sew, the the curriculum includes what is not limited to nutritional decision-making, disease prevention, refusal skills, anti-bullying, character development and ethics, interpersonal skills, goal-setting, problem-solving, career exploration, personal finance, self-esteem and self-management, home and personal safety, and the list goes on. No matter what an individual ends up doing with the rest of their life, whether they become an engineer, gas station attendant, doctor, bus driver, lawyer, teacher, housewife, househusband, construction worker, entrepreneur, they need the skills to be able to hold on to a job, have a good relationship, and be happy. The current issues of our societies, such as childhood obesity, dysfunctional family relationships, personal bankruptcy, and increasing violence, need to be addressed at an early age. The middle school curriculum includes practical decision-making strategies and project-based learning to do just that. As family and consumer science educators, our goal continues to be to prepare all students for their future and to become a vital member of the global society in which we live. Please consider keeping Healthy Living in the middle schools in the Burlington School District. Thanks for listening.
Thanks a lot, Jennifer. Jennifer Sutton, followed by Sean Clark, followed by Amy Corwin.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Sutton, and I am the Community Outreach Coordinator at Hunt and See Hunt Middle School. Here are some of my colleagues. The Community Outreach Program allows all Hunt Middle School students to venture far beyond the walls of their classroom, using the community as a resource and a laboratory for creative learning. Students have the opportunity to participate in hands-on, real-life projects through surface learning, community service, internships, job shadows, and experimental projects. Through these programs, students gain valuable experiences, work on 21st century skills building, create engagement and citizenship, are able to apply and demonstrate what they have learned, and make important career, college, and community connections. While completing outreach projects, students work on reading, writing, math, computer, and interviewing skills, learn about science, history, and sustainability firsthand, and explore different cultures and culinary practices, all while creating important interpersonal relationships with community members. The Hunt Community Outreach Coordinator position offers programming affecting all students, staff, as well as parents at Hunt Middle School, and has become a part of the fabric of the school. An example of one of the outreach programs is the Hunt Community Harvest Dinner Celebration, which is run by the outreach coordinator each year, showcasing projects created by all Hunt students and attended by over 600 students, staff, parents, and community members. Every student creates a project connected to sustainability, the local harvest, and Hunt's Healthy City Youth Farm. The hands-on, real-life projects are showcased spanned across all curriculums: math, social studies, science, language arts, music, tech ed, Healthy Living, and computer technology. The Dinner Celebration has been featured in the Burlington Free Press and in the Healthy Lifestyle Kiwi Magazine, a national magazine which highlights sustainability, nutrition, and wellness programs. The Burlington School District vision states, "Expanding partnerships is a critical element of our vision. Our community partners play a key role in all of our schools. They ensure new opportunities for our students that help prepare them for the career opportunities of the 21st century." The Community Outreach Program works with up to 100 community partners each year. Furthermore, the vision states the following for our students to be successful in the 21st century: developing an educational curriculum structure and model that drives excellence in core subjects and critical skills to prepare students to excel in 21st century, featuring hands-on, real-life projects that strengthen collaboration and organizational skills; global awareness and leadership skills; curriculum enhancements in sustainability and arts; information, economic, and technology literacy. The Community Outreach Program deals directly with these needs: hands-on real-life projects, skills, and curriculum enhancements, which are critical to our students being successful in the 21st century, as our vision states. Please consider these important skills when voting on the Hunt Community Outreach Program. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Sean Clark, followed by Amy Corwin, followed by Lucas Bowman.
My name is Sean Clark. I am in the sixth grade at Hunt Middle School. I am representing the student council at Hunt. I am here to share my point of Healthy Living. I know the parents think it's all just a cooking class, but you don't really know that much. I know kids are coming home with cookies. Is that healthy? Maybe we can make it healthy to eat. Healthy Living is not just all about eating. It's also about drugs and alcohol at this age. In this school, you can see half of the kids are obese. I have been Healthy Living for some time, and I love it. It is a place where you learn about drugs, but it is a place where you can learn with your best teacher, Ms. Angé. Sean.
Thank you, Sean. Very articulate. Amy, followed by Lucas, followed by Leona Bowman.
Hello, I'm also here to talk about Healthy Living. Healthy Living is one of the most improving classes at Hunt because it teaches kids about eating healthy, being active, and why not take drugs and drink alcohol underage, along with some basic cooking skills and sewing, as well as many other things, as I've already been listed. It really made me think about my eating habits, so now for an after-school snack, I will take an apple or banana rather than a cookie. You can see how Healthy Living is much more than just a normal ed class. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Very welcome. Lucas Bowman, followed by Leona Bowman, followed by Gabriel Bowman.
Hi, I'm Lucas Bowman. I'm an eighth grader at Hunt Middle School, and I took Healthy Living last year. I thought it was a really helpful class, and it taught me a lot about many things, such as, one of the most important things for me was the careers unit. Learned how to find the right jobs that would work well for you in your life, and how to stay with them and be happy. Also, we learned how to finance our money and that we earn, which is really helpful. We also cover CPR and first aid, which is extremely important if you ever are in a situation where you're needed. These are really important skills that will help kids in their future.
Thank you, Lucas. Leona, and Gethinell Bowman. Gabriel Bowman, followed by Dasha.
Hi, I'm a sixth grader at Hunt, and we just finished learning about how to prevent food poisoning and Healthy Living. And I know that soon we will be learning about drugs and alcohol, which I think is very important to learn. So please do not cut this class. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Leona.
Hello, my name is Gabby Bowman. I have four kids in the Burlington system, and I have three kids at Hunt, so I'm speaking in support of the Healthy Living class. First, middle school is the ideal place to reach and teach students before they engage in unhealthy behavior. So a student who has received health education in middle school will be better equipped to make healthy choices and will excel in high school. The middle school years are a critical time for providing health education. Students in middle school are at their most vulnerable period in life and are at the height of risk-taking behaviors. So many students will begin dealing with a variety of health-related issues, such as reproductive issues, drugs and alcohol, self-esteem, mental health, peer pressures. Teaching Healthy Living is an investment in the future, and I hope you won't eliminate this curriculum. And also, speaking in support of the outreach, Community Outreach Coordinator, Jennifer Sutton has mentioned most of the things that I wanted to say too. So there is, I just wanted to, this whole program allows the students to venture outside their classrooms using the community as a resource for creative learning. Students have the opportunity to participate in community service, service learning, internships, job shadows, experimental projects, and they gain valuable experiences, create engagement and citizenship, and explore different cultures, all while creating important interpersonal relationships with the community members. So again, I hope you won't eliminate this position.
Thank you, Amy. Dasha? Sorry, we're not pronouncing your class name.
Yeah, I was wondering if you'd be able to.
Followed by Abby McCune, and Maude Williams.
Hi, my name is Dasha Tinkulah, and I have one daughter at Hunt Middle School. My oldest son has already graduated. And I was quite saddened to see some of the choices being proposed regarding the budget cuts. One of them is the Healthy Living. In my opinion, this class is the only class offering real-life learning for the kids. My son, who is now 20, learned many skills in this class. He learned how to cook, how to bake, how to sew. He learned how to budget his small income and plan for his career. He learned how to withstand peer pressure, bullying, and prejudice. He learned about good nutrition, eating disorders, and substance abuse. The only thing they didn't cover was how to do laundry, and I covered that. Now, it's my daughter's turn, and I would really like her to see the same quality level of education as my son did eight years ago. Another position I wouldn't want to see go is the sixth grade Spanish teacher. I think learning languages is very important, and especially Spanish, because it's the second-most-used language in the US. And the number of speakers of Spanish between 1990 and 2000 senses doubled. So there's a lot of Spanish speakers, and it's growing. I'm originally from Europe, and in Europe, it's, there are, the industrialized countries are trying to emphasize learning languages. There is 60% of students in Europe who learn two languages or more at school, at elementary school. And I think US, and now Burlington, is going to be lacking in that curriculum, which I think makes students less competitive in the world market. And lastly, the third position I was saddened to see to go is the Community Outreach Coordinator. I always thought Burlington is a great community, and these days, we hear a lot about healthy communities around the country. I work as a researcher for a company where I work on studies which are trying to prove impact of communities on the general well-being of a population. And I believe this school district should support these efforts rather than undermine them, so I would like if this position could be kept as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dasha. Abby McCune, and Maude Williams, followed by Tammy Kipers.
Hello, my name is Abby.
And my name is Maude. We're sixth graders at Hunt Middle School.
Did anyone like to talk to you about the importance of the Healthy Living program?
In Healthy Living, one of the things we learn about is the dangers of drugs and alcohol, and the consequences that will occur if we use these substances.
We also learn the dangers of drunk driving and getting drunk in general.
When we learned about the dangers of drugs, and, no, uh, what we learned about the dangers of drugs are that drugs kill brain cells, and they never go back.
Another topic we learned about was food insurance.
We learned about healthy eating habits and getting a healthy amount of exercise daily.
These are really important life skills.
Something else I have to say is that without the drugs and alcohol unit, we've never learned about the dangers of these substances.
I know for a fact that if we don't learn this stuff now, at this point in our lives, in three years when we were in high school, the majority of students involved in these things will be much higher than what it is now.
Now, of course, I'm not saying no one will do drugs because of Healthy Living. But we're saying in the future, the chance of kids getting involved is smaller because we learned this stuff, and the awful things that can happen to your body, gain, and the risk of yours or someone else's life.
One statement I have to make is that Healthy Living impacts every student in many different ways. Kids at my school enjoy Healthy Living, and our teacher, Ms. Angé, and I also have friends who go to Edmunds that say they really enjoy Healthy Living with their teacher, Mrs. Anna.
We think it's important to keep Healthy Living in our schools.
We hope you take our points into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, girl. Tammy Kipers, followed by Peggy O'Neil, followed by Liz Curry.
Hi, first I want to thank the board for listening. My name is Tammy Kipers, and this is my family. I have three boys that are in the Burlington School District, and my husband. I'm here tonight, though, to talk on behalf of the Hunt Middle School. There's been lots of talk recently about diversity in our populations at schools, and we also need to be diverse in our methods of teaching in our schools. Our children learn in many different ways. Hands-on learning in real-life situations are the essence of helping educate our children to succeed. And Burlington has already had the wisdom to invest in many of these enriching activities, such as the ones that Mrs. Sutton was speaking of, doing outreach in the community. There's a marvelous harvest dinner that takes place at the Hunt Middle School. There's an iron shop where children compete in cooking. And there's the business shadowing, teaching children different careers. Also, with Ms. Angé, in my son's words, he said, "She taught me about different careers, how to cook and sew, and the effects of drug and alcohol, all very useful skills." He also added, "You wouldn't want your kid to grow up without knowing the dangers of drugs and alcohol." I took years of Spanish in school, and it wasn't until I went to Spain that I actually learned the language. I did four years of college learning to be a teacher. It really wasn't until I student-taught that I learned the most that I did in those four years. The sooner that we can get the kids into the community or at school, learning life skills with hands-on experiences of things they'll really be doing in life, the better off they will be. Textbook learning and real-life skills and experiences are equally as vital to our children's education. Let's give our kids the best of both worlds and give them these two things. We ask you to seriously consider not cutting these crucial positions. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Thank you, Neel, followed by Liz Curry.
Hi, my name is Peggy O'Neil. I am from Edmunds Elementary. I was here in December and also last year during the previous budget cycle. I'm really proud of the board, those who were on the board last year, for the work that you all did in hiring the par educators for the kindergarten classes. So looking at the budget this year and the cuts of 16 par educators, most of them special ed, leaves me with a very heavy heart. That will have a huge impact on all our students, not just the students who require or who need or appreciate the support of a par educator, but all the other kids in that classroom, and for the teachers, and for the administrators of the school, and our schools. Adequate staffing at the school level is incredibly important for our students' success. You heard that from Suzanne Visar. So I'm asking you to please reconsider cutting all of those positions of par educators. I also support the Healthy Living program on another note, in creating a safe environment for our students to learn some really delicate issues, and hope that you reconsider cutting that program. And then finally, this is an issue that was brought up at the public hearing in December, is really, as a taxpayer now, I also want to hear not just these proposals of what could be cut and what's a 2% budget or a 4% budget increase, but what is the cost sharing that's going on across the city? And perhaps looking into the future for different funding and budget models that maybe look outside of the school district into maybe county-wide school district, where we look at resources, or we look at special education costs across a larger area. How can we do some of this cost sharing? I mean, there's transportation involved, there's support, there's housing. There are myriad issues that I think if we look more broadly, perhaps we can come up with better funding models and better budgets to support our students.
Thank you, Amy. Liz Curry, followed by Claudia. Claudia, mention Martin.
I'm Liz Curry, and I'm a...
I'm Liz Curry and I'm a parent of a son in high school and a son in Hunt. And I every year try and imagine what it's like to be in your shoes with the budget. And as a family in the school district, I think parents, we also have the responsibility to think about how to approach the budget and knowing that it's our tax dollars at work. And I think that using the data-driven decision-making process as a criteria is extremely important during the budget process. And I guess have some more questions than anything around, you know, what is the data showing? What is the data behind the proposal that you've received for the budget? And I would be curious, just not knowing a whole lot, nearly as much as you guys know, about the data. If, you know, we're seeing data demonstrating, you know, the benefits of drug and alcohol and sexuality education, which I would assume we are, and, you know, having the kids. I know if my son weren't able to be here, he would be with his peers from Hunt advocating very strongly for retaining components of the healthy living program and those components being drug, alcohol, and sexuality training. And I'm wondering, you know, I think because the school district is going through some major rethinking, if there's an opportunity to think about the way that we provide those pieces of the program. And, you know, maybe perhaps that involves retaining the outreach coordinator to get them involved and kind of focusing on how we can provide the content that's critical, which I'm sure you all don't want to see go away. The content of that subject is clearly making a big difference in students' lives and their families' lives. And so, you know, I think thinking outside the box may be helpful because we do have a responsibility to address costs, but thinking about other ways to deliver those services may be helpful. I also want to ask, as you go through the budget, that another criteria you use is protecting the most vulnerable in our community. And, you know, when I see something like paraeducators being eliminated, it just makes me really, again, think about, you know, it's easy sometimes to allow a disparity to grow between kids who are getting a lot more services than other kids who, you know, may not necessarily get back to the data. But, you know, I would say at the risk of being wildly unpopular, which seems to be my tendency, that, you know, when my kid took elementary school Spanish, I, you know, I just want to say, is the data really there? You know, to, is that really beneficial compared to what paraeducators do for all of our kids? So, you know, I, to tell you the truth, bringing Spanish into the elementary school was kind of a stretch anyway. It was nice, it was bad, it was during the fat budget year, it was great, but is the value, is the data there showing that elementary school Spanish is bringing us the same value as paraeducators in the classroom? I just, I know you're in a position to make choices like that and I feel bad about that, but, you know, just along those lines, I would ask you to, you know, look at the tech ed in middle schools. Like, my son almost failed tech ed because he has really poor fine motor skills and he's never gonna operate a, you know, a power slot. So like, you know, the data's showing that tech ed is giving all our students, you know, value compared to the value they clearly get from drug, alcohol, and sexuality, you know, education. So I would just ask you to look a little more broadly at the value of the data behind what we're offering our kids and do they really all need to know how to run a drill? You know, if they physically have a real challenge doing that and get a bad grade. So, thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Claudia, followed by Kathy Orwell. Followed by anybody else who hasn't had a chance to speak who would like to be able to.
Hi, I'm Claudia Ritchie Morton, a parent and this is another parent, Leslie Helper. We're from Edmunds Elementary School. I am also the co-chair of the Family School Partnership and I've done that for the last two years. And that program's done some pretty cool things. The first year, it was instrumental in outfitting our gym with speakers and a sound system so that we could bring our community together and actually hear ourselves talk, which was fabulous. Last year, we decided instead of just guessing how families feel about Edmunds or assuming, why don't we ask them? So we partnered with UVM and created this amazing survey to find out if parents felt welcome or not. And one thing we learned is, yes, they felt welcome, but there was a lot of other things we learned. And one was that they wanted their kids, some kids to have more support. So this year, we created a morning mentor tutoring program, based it off of the Champlain model. Anyway, that is all fabulous, but I'm actually here to talk about more pressing needs at Edmunds. And in my opinion, for the last couple of years, we need a lot more support administratively. We have about three hundred and seventy kids. We have one principal, one office manager, and a guidance counselor. And not to take anything away from any other school, but the middle school right next door, which in June had three hundred and eighty-nine children, has a principal and assistant principal, two assistants. I mean, I'm not gonna go through all the numbers, but the bottom line is, we know that our elementary schools need support. And we also know that Edmunds population has been changing for the last couple of years. You know, we have a wide variety of academic and social needs. And as a parent, when I walk in there and I see children overflowing and not having their space in planning rooms, it's striking. Or if I go and meet with the principal, maybe once a week, and she gets interrupted three times to deal with a very important behavior issue, I know that something's going on here where we need more support. And then finally, when I have a child who comes home in first grade and the only thing he talks about are the behavior issues in the class every single day, I know that our kids don't feel safe. And I know you guys are dealing with lots of things and I think our principal is amazing. I am so happy to have her, as is our administrative assistant. But there is not enough support there. So when I hear about four, how many para, sixteen para's getting cut, and then I also know that we don't have enough support there, in my opinion, and many others right from the get-go, it really worries me. So first of all, I also want to thank you for your time because I know you guys are in a very difficult position. But I think we need to think about some other creative solutions to get some more support there. That's it.
Thank you, Claudia. Kathy Orwell. I'm gonna be asking if anybody hasn't had a chance to speak. We will have time for more speakers. Kathy.
Hi, I'm Kathy Orwell. I live in Ward, Warren, and I run the after-school program at Hunt. And fifteen years ago, I sat in your seat, so I know exactly how hard this is. But I still have to say what I have to say because I guess I just don't agree with you on some of these things. For me, Spanish, cutting Spanish at the middle school is pretty sad. I, when I was on the board, we started the Chinese program at this, in Burlington Schools. And I watched it get cut at the sixth-grade level eight years ago and, or maybe it was five, I can't even remember. And it is a shadow of itself today. So I know that it's important. I lived for thirteen years in Germany. I had to learn German, going to Germany, speaking not a word of it. I understand that this is a hard thing and many Americans don't understand how important languages are because many of us don't speak a second one. And we don't need to because we have this huge expanse that doesn't need languages, except for English. But Spanish is the second most spoken language in this country. And it is the twenty-first century and we are in a global economy. And I am scared that if you start cutting at the sixth-grade level, that so too goes the rest of the Spanish program. And I know how hard it is to get programs back into the budget when they have been cut years before. My other thing is that healthy living, you've heard everyone talk about all the things it does, alcohol and drug abuse, teaching kids about this. I moved here eighteen years, twenty years ago. Eighteen years ago, I started a youth center up in the New North End and I started it because we had a sixth grader pregnant at Hunt. Kids were using drug and alcohol, all Moxes in that school at the time. There was nothing for them to do up there. So coming as a social worker and having done this kind of work, I put money and people together and we started a youth center up there. I have seen, and I wish I had the data, years ago, I put it together for the schools and I don't have it anymore, but to show that over the twenty years that that program has been going, and it's not just our program, it is a combination of giving kids things to do, teaching them in the schools about drug and alcohol, pregnancy prevention, all those things that are in healthy living. And having drug and alcohol counselors at the school to work with those kids, doing it as a whole is what has cut the amount of drug and alcohol used by middle schoolers today in those schools. And we don't have sixth graders pregnant, or at least not to my knowledge, do we have sixth graders pregnant anymore. My third thing is the community outreach coordinator. Here we are, starting the Partnership for Change and working on, looking at going out into the community and bringing the community into the schools. And that's fine to do it at the high school, we're gonna cut it at the middle school? I, for me, that's a real problem. And so I think we have to look, I know that's hard, it's a hard way to find money, and I can only say that also in the eighteen years since I, in the fifteen years since I was on this board, the administration has doubled. We used to, we used to rent out half that building to UVM and now it's full of administrators. Now, I don't know what they all do and I have no idea what the budget numbers are for those administrators, but we're only cutting two of them and we're cutting all these programs to kids. My feeling is, is that we really have to look more at how much money we are spending at administrative level because we shouldn't be touching kids when we have so many administrators. Thank you.
Does anybody who hasn't had a chance to speak or would like to speak? Come on up, please. Jill. Jill McKeown.
I apologize, Ms. Angé, this Mr. Pillsbury came to my healthy living class today and I struggled through that with what I have left to speak. I had the wonderful opportunity, I did come up last, but school board meeting with Ms. Angé and speak, but I felt like I had to say some more words. I had the wonderful opportunity to teach for Change or Fair enough this year, I should do some wellness projects in the district. There's a letter that I have in my hand that was written by Owanda and sent out December twelfth. And I'll just read two paragraphs out of it. This letter will serve as an update and a reminder about present legislation, board results from the two thousand and twelve School Health Profile Survey and requirements for education, health education. I'll jump down to the bottom where it says, according to one of the turnaround principles for school improvement, to improve academic achievement is imperative that teachers and leaders establish a school environment that improves school safety and discipline and that addresses other non-academic factors that impact student achievement, such as students' social, emotional health needs. This requires establishing school-wide policies and procedures to maintain this environment and developing comprehensive health education programs led by qualified teachers to support the student learning needed to make decisions that lead to optimal health, which in turn will support their academic growth. If we cut healthy living, we're doing a disservice to our students. Middle school is a pivotal time in students' lives. They make decisions as early as age ten. The average drinking age at which teenagers begin to drink is age thirteen. That's the average. They don't make that decision necessarily in high school when they are getting some health education. But not all freshmen get health education the first, that first year. Some of them have to wait until junior year. It's too late. Who's gonna educate these kids about the cleaning, the cleaning supplies under the kitchen sink that can get students high? Students are asking me all these questions about this. Who's going to discuss issues such as cutting the risks in suicide prevention to help students make better choices and find the help they need to make a healthy choice and move on so they actually get to high school? The Vermont Middle School Youth Risk Behavior Survey, the new one is going to be coming out, this is the two thousand and eleven one. It shows in here that, yes, sixth graders are not causing, getting into as much trouble, but by eighth grade, they're definitely testing the limits. They are, they are experimenting with drugs and alcohol. They are experimenting with oral sex. I get questions every single day on these topics. And I am so glad that I'm there to help these Edmunds kids make these decisions, give them the proper information that they need so that they can move forward and be responsible citizens in the Burlington School District. To grow up, to get good jobs, and to contribute to their community as well as the world around them. I have a pile of letters here from some of my students in sixth grade when they got wind of this potential for this to get cut. They were practically in tears. They said, how can they cut this? It's the only class they can really relax and, and de-stress in and feel like I can make some decisions based on what I'm learning. So I'll pass those to you, those are yours to keep. I also have a letter from one of the counselors at Edmunds and wanted you to keep that in file. And I hope that you will reconsider your consideration to cut healthy living at middle schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? I would like to thank you for your articulate discussion of the positions that you care about. Thank you for caring about the Burlington School District. I'm especially proud of our students. I hope that you will always feel free to speak your mind, speak in what you believe in. I'm very proud of you coming tonight. You've given us a lot of things to think about and we appreciate your time. We know you're busy people. We appreciate your time and coming to speak to us. And I'm a little concerned, I'm sure that you'll all be concerned with what you said. And we start our deliberations tomorrow night. We have our formal business meeting, formal school board meeting at seven o'clock here tomorrow night. Is there a motion to adjourn this? Commissioner Fuhrman, followed by Commissioner Cronchell. All who are in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Close. Thank you very much.